Business night is roll call, Mr. Heaney.
So Jim Miller.
Here.
Chris Souza.
Here.
Eric Curtin. Eric Curtin.
Unmute Eric.
I'm here.
Tom Silvera.
Here.
And Thomas Heaney, here, finally.
Second order of business is the adoption of the May 25th meeting. Angela is going to put those into our folders for next month, so I'm going to table voting on those until we've had a chance to review them. And so I'm going to go right into administrative issues and hopefully clear some of these out pretty quickly. Mr. Costa or Chris McNally, do we need to read these in, or can we just address them?
With the administrative matters?
Yes.
I think it's good practice to read them in, especially since we're going via Zoom, but I haven't attended one of your meetings in.
That's okay. Mr. Heaney, can you read the first referred to planning? Item number two.
Item number two, referred to planning and conservation committee petition of A1 Roofing and Construction LLC owners by their attorney David P. Martland Esquire for a special use from section 1106 to construct a 5,200 square foot office in special trade contracting building. Associated parking and water quality improvements as approved by R A D E M located in Zone 1 of the watershed protection district. Said real estate is located at 990 Quinick Avenue and further identified as lot 507 on Texas Sisters Platt 114.
Mr. Martland, would you like to address this? You're muted.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I understand that that matter needs to be advertised and a butter notification sent and it should be continued. Until that is done.
Okay, so we're going to continue that to the August meeting, I understand?
Yes.
And what is the, I know July is the 27th. What's the date in August, Mr. Heaney? Is that the 24th?
24th.
24th.
Yep.
Yep. So that's going to continue to date 24. Thank you, Mr. Martland.
Thank you.
Stay with us because I know the next one, Jairus. Mr. Heaney, if you can read this third item.
They referred to, item number three, referred to planning and conservation committee petition of on the pond LLC owners and Diego's Middletown LLC applicant by their attorney David P. Martland Esquire for a special use permit from section 602, 803A and 1103B to permit the expansion of an existing restaurant with liquor license located in Zone 1 of the watershed protection district by reconstructing and expanding a 324 square foot covered second floor deck and adding 150 square foot third floor deck to the rear of the structure while reducing the overall capacity. Said real estate is located at 116 Aquinick Avenue and further identified as lot 135 and 136 on Texas Sisters Platt 115 Southeast.
And Mr. Heaney, if you can read the next one because it's the same applicant.
Item number four, referred to planning and conservation committee petition of on the pond LLC owners and Diego's Middletown LLC applicant by their attorney David P. Martland Esquire for a variance from section 603, 701 and 803G to allow the construction of a second floor covered deck with a right side yard setback of 12 feet 9 inches where 20 feet is required and a 48.8 feet rear yard setback where 50 feet is required. Said real estate is located at 116 Aquinick Avenue and further identifies lot 135, lot 136 on Texas Sisters Platt 115 Southeast.
Mr. Martland?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, David Martland, on behalf of the applicants and owners. I would ask that these be continued to the July 27th meeting so that the matter may be advertised and a butter notification sent. We've received the advisory opinions of the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission.
Okay, so we're going to, we're going to continue those to 7/27/2021.
Thank you.
That concludes our administration. We're going to go into the continued cases from March 23rd, 2021. Mr. Heaney, if you can read the first one.
The first one is a petition of SENS Corporation owner, and this is at Zero West Main Road.
Okay, Mr. Lynch, are you there?
I am, Mr. Chairman. Jay Lynch, on behalf of the applicant. This is, I guess, the following matter as well. We're still in front of the TRC. We had a meeting, a conference call several weeks ago with myself, Mr. Regan, the applicant, Mr. Hall, and Mr. Martland on behalf of the owner of the property, trying to resolve the outstanding issues regarding an easement that goes through the subject site. The town requested a title search. Mr. Martland provided that about a week to 10 days ago. That's being reviewed by the staff. So I requesting a continuance. I'd suggest we put this on for the August meeting, August 24th.
Okay, we're going to, we're going to continue. SENS Corporation, which is both this petition and the following petition for the special use permit to 8/24/2021.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch.
A good evening.
And then just for the record, that's both a variance and a special use permit for SENS Corporation at Zero West Main Road.
That's correct.
Thank you again, Mr. Lynch. Mr. Heaney, the next one, the zoning board review continued cases from April 27th.
Petition of Newport National Real Estate LLC owners by their attorney, Robert M. Silva Esquire, and this is at 425 Mitchell's Lane.
Mr. Silva, are you prepared to go forward this evening?
No, you're, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
I can, loud and clear.
Okay, great. This matter is still pending before the planning board. And we are in negotiations with the City of Newport Water Department in connection with a plan that's acceptable to that department to bring water to the clubhouse. Until we get that agreed arrangement with the City of Newport, our application cannot go forward as a completed application before the planning board, which is under the development plan impact review. So I understand that we're getting very close, if not within a week or so, of resolving our issue with Newport Water Department, which means we'll probably be able to set up a schedule with the technical review committee of the planning board and then the full planning board. On the basis of my experience of what kind of time that would take, I would suggest that as we did the last time, we continue this not for one month, but for a minimum of two months, the August 24th. And hopefully by then, the planning process will have begun and been completed.
Okay, so we're going to go ahead and continue that to 8/24. Thank you, Mr. Silva.
You're welcome.
Mr. Heaney, the continued cases from May 25th.
Petition of John Sylvia III and Kate Sylvia owners, and this is at 749 Mitchell's Lane.
And Mr. Costa, this is one where Mr. Souza has a conflict, correct?
We have, he's a butter.
Yeah, Mr. Souza had the conflict being in a butter of this application. And that would probably render us without a quorum, without any alternates for the zoning board.
Right, so we can't hear that. So I'm going to go ahead and continue that until our 7/27 meeting. And I will trust that the council by that time will have found replacements for our three alternates. Mr. Heaney, next case.
Petition of Telly Amaranth and Elizabeth Amaranth owners, and that's at 163 Aquinick Avenue.
Mr. Bean, are you on the phone?
Mr. Bean did submit some correspondence that is in the folder referenced in this application. And I believe he requested a continuance till July 27th. It should be in the correspondence folder.
Okay. I read that. I thought that was for the last meeting. So we're going to continue both petitions until then?
Yes.
Mr. Costa, if my senior memory fails me, just remind me that I have a question for you regarding how the code works. And maybe Mr. McNally, maybe you can help me with this later on after the call.
Happy to.
The next petition, Mr. Heaney?
So again, before we go on, that was both for a variance and a special use.
That's correct.
Okay, so the next petition is petition of the Clambay Club of Newport owners by their attorney, Robert M. Silva Esquire, and this is located at 353 Tuckaman Avenue.
Mr. Silva, this has your name associated with it?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I am present tonight along with my witnesses who are involved in the development of this expansion. David Bray from Caputo and Wicks Engineering Company, Robert Fairbanks from Fairbanks Engineering, and Nathan Godfrey from Newport Appraisal.
So you're prepared to go forward? You're prepared to go forward? Okay, I'm going to get through our summary hearings and this will be our first hearing tonight.
Thank you.
So we're going to make that our first hearing after we get through the summary. That concludes all our continuances. The next area of business is a summary hearing. Summary hearings are those hearings that are requesting minimal relief. Usually it's less than 25% relief on any side setback. We have two tonight. What I'm going to have Mr. Heaney do is read them both into the record. Then I'm going to ask if anyone if anyone on the, on the phone would like to speak against the petition, and if they do, then I will I will make that a full hearing at the end of all the hearings that are listed. So Mr. Heaney, if you could read the two petitions in.
Summary hearings, petition of Philip Robertson and Lisa Anistos owners for a variance from section 603, 701 to construct a shed of approximately 12 feet by 16 feet, resulting in a front yard setback of 25 feet where 40 feet is required. Said real estate is located at One South Drive and further identified as lot 58 on Texas Sisters Platt 117. Petition of Carlos Godoy and Susan Kloster Godoy owners for a variance from sections 603 and 701 to construct a 16 foot by 20 foot one-story addition and a 14 by 18 foot deck resulting in a south side setback of 16 feet where 30 feet is required. Said real estate is located at 19 Bartlett Road and further identified as lot 84 on Texas Sisters Platt 129.
Okay, is there anyone on the phone that'd like to speak against either of those two petitions? Raise your hand so Angela can recognize you. I'm going to give it a minute.
Mr. Chairman, you're asking for those that are wanting to speak against or for, not the petition, are correct?
That's correct. Just if anyone wants to speak against the petition, not for, just against.
Okay, thank you. Not seeing any hands.
Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. And can I get a motion from the board to accept the summary hearings, the summary petitions as presented?
This is Chris Souza. I'll make a motion to approve the summary hearings as presented.
Do I have a second?
Tom Silvera seconds it.
Thank you, Mr. Souza, Mr. Silver. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. With that, we're going to start our first full hearings. And we're going to start with the Clam, yes, the Clambay Club of Newport. Mr. Heaney, if you can read the complete petition in.
Petition of the Clambay Club of Newport owners by their attorney, Robert M. Silva Esquire for a special use permit from sections 803A to allow for an expansion of an existing non-conforming use by way of construction of an outdoor covered deck of 25 feet 5 inches by 25 feet 8 inches. Said real estate is located at 353 Tuckaman Avenue and further identified as lot 139 on Texas Sisters Platt 122.
Mr. Silva, we're ready.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. The petition as outlined by Mr. Heaney is correct. The dimension for the deck, though, is 24.5 times 25.8. And it's an open air deck that requires a special use permit because the Clambay Club itself is located in an R30 zone. And as such a use that it is, it is not permitted in the zoning ordinance. So the entire structure and the use is technically non-conforming. And anytime anything is to be done to expand, improve, or change the non-conforming structure and use requires a special use permit. And that's what I filed on behalf of the Clambay Club, seeking a special use permit to allow the addition and construction of an outdoor deck, not enclosed, to be used for dining. And the need for this, or the reason for its request came about during the COVID situation where outdoor dining was encouraged and allowed under the executive order of the town of Middletown. And the Clambay Club decided that it would expand and have outdoor dining as such without technically expanding the number of patrons that would be in the facility itself. The matter is set forth rather plainly in the plans prepared by Robert Fairbanks, the engineer, and as also assisted with by David Bray of Caputo and Hicks. And if the board wishes, after looking at the plans, to have any explanation of what is going to be constructed and where, I'm sure that Mr. Fairbanks and Mr. Bray would be glad to answer any questions of the board. But I would prefer not to have to go through a detailed questioning of the witnesses. I would only ask the board to approve them as expert engineer witnesses who have appeared before various boards, I believe, including this board in the past.
Yeah, Mr. Silva, we have the, we have copies of everything in our files and all your experts are recognized by this board as, as expert witnesses for this matter. I just have a couple of quick questions. I agree with you. I don't think we need to, to beat this up too much. But it doesn't appear that you have any setback release that you're looking for, correct?
That's correct. Mr. Costa and I went over it, and there are no violations or requirements for setbacks.
So this is a simple deck. The reason why we're doing the special use permit is because of the non-conforming use. I read Mr. Gottfried's article, you know, his, his report.
His report is the real estate, yeah.
So, you know, I, I think really in the essence of, of our time, I would, I would ask the board if they have any questions of, of Mr. Silva or the expert witnesses. And then I'd like to open it up to the public to see if there's people out there with a burning desire not to build the deck.
I don't have any questions.
Any questions from the board?
I would just ask, Mr. Silva, if you would repeat your three expert witnesses. I'll only capture.
Clearly. Clearly. David Bray, B R A Y, of the company Caputo and Wicks, and Robert Fairbanks, an engineer from Fairbanks Engineering. And the third is Jay Nathan Godfrey, the real estate expert from Newport Appraisal Inc.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Silva, I'd like to open it up to the public to see if there's any comments that need to come in from the public. Do you have an issue with that? You can report the right to put expert testimony on if, if need be afterwards.
Thank you.
Is there anyone on the line that would like to speak either for or against the petition presented? Angela, let's give it a minute and we'll see what people say.
Certainly.
Okay, seeing, seeing nobody's interesting making public comment. Mr. Silva, at this point, I'd like to close the public hearing and entertain a motion from my board. Do you have an issue with that?
Not at all.
And I have a motion to accept petition as presented?
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Curtin made the first. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Got to get quicker, Mr. Silver. Discussion?
I'm going to vote in favor of it, considering none of the directed butters had a problem with it. I don't see that it would be a nuisance to the neighborhood. Those reasons, I'm going to vote for it.
Yeah, I too. I, you know, it's a simple special use permit because of the non-conforming use. As the special use goes, there's five criteria. This absolutely does not go outside of that. It's not going to be a public nuisance. It's not going to, it's not going to accept, it's not going to affect the real estate values in the area. And I think it fits with our comprehensive plan. So I too am going to vote for it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Mr. Silva.
Thank you on the board.
Can you get this, can you get this written up for us and deliver it to Town Hall?
I will prepare it and get it to Mr. Costa and the solicitor's office for their review. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'm sure everybody appreciates you working on your birthday, Mr. Silva. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Yeah, I'm trying, I'm trying not to remember it because it starts with an eight.
Oh, no.
Oh, yes. How I got here, I don't know. But I'm going to a juror and my children are going to have a little party on the back deck with some clam zupa. And I'll enjoy that.
Well, we all aspire to get to that eight zero number, so congratulations.
I'd like to shoot that at my golf, never mind to be the age. Take care.
Okay, let's get the next one up, Mr. Heaney.
Next one is under new petitions?
Yes, sir.
Petition of Susan W. Woods owner for a variance from sections 603, 701, and 803G to add a 12 foot, 9 inch by 4 foot, 5 inch front porch addition to an existing porch resulting in a, in a 28 foot. Doesn't read clearly, but it only has 20 foot, 28 feet of setback from Walcott Avenue and 18 feet from James Street where a 40 foot is required. And that's because it's a unique, it's a corner lot. Said real estate is located at 468 Walcott Avenue and further identified as lot 29 on Texas Sisters Platt 122.
Okay, Ms. Woods, are you on the phone? Angela, do you see Mrs. Woods out there or Ms. Woods?
There was one hand raised and they've entered into the conversation.
Oh, okay. Are you the petitioner?
Yes, Susan Woods.
Okay, Susan. Can I swear you in first? Can you raise your right hand? We're going to assume you're doing it even though I can't see you. Do you swear the testimony this evening will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Susan? Ms. Woods?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you now. I just asked you to, you, do you swear to tell the truth this evening?
Yes.
Okay, state your name and address for the record, please.
Susan Woods, 468 Walcott Avenue, Middletown, Rhode Island.
Can you tell us what you're trying to accomplish this evening?
Yes, we have an existing front porch that we would like to add to, as, as was just read. Adding an additional 12 feet 9 inches. And the width of it is 4.5 inches. I believe you have the package there. It shows a pretty good picture of what we're trying to do. And the frontage, as you mentioned, was 40 feet, was required. We have 28. And then being on the corner of James Street, we have a setback of 18 feet where, again, 40 is required. But we also, we also have an existing overhang, which you can probably see pretty clearly in, in the package, where that front porch will extend, extend to the edge of the house there. So.
That's really all you're doing is extending the existing porch down the side of the house?
Correct, yes.
And it already, that porch already exists in that, in that front yard setback. So you're going four and a half feet out and just down 12 feet nine? That's what it looks like from the.
Yeah, yeah. And that four, four feet 5 inches is the same width of the existing porch now.
And have you, have you chatted with your neighbors?
Yes, we have. I think there might be one or two on the phone as well. But yes, I've, I've checked with my butters and everyone seems to think it's a nice idea. And will make the house look a lot nicer, actually.
Let me see if any of my board wants to ask you any questions or, and if they do. Does anyone on the board have any questions for Ms. Woods?
No questions.
Okay, seeing none, seeing none, Susan, I'm going to open it up to the public to see if anyone wants to speak either for or against the petition. So I'm opening up for 468 Walcott Avenue. If you're on the line right now and you'd like to speak either for or against the petition, please raise your hand. Hello?
Hello, good evening to the chairman. This is Barry Doyle, 479 Walcott Avenue, direct to butter, directly across the street from Mrs. Woods. And I'm calling you to let you know that I wholeheartedly support what they're looking to do with their porch.
Let me, let me swear you in. Barry, let me swear you.
You certainly may.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you swear the testimony this evening will be the whole truth? Nothing but the truth?
I swear.
Okay, state your name and address for the record.
Certainly. Barry Doyle, 479 Walcott Avenue, direct to butter. Actually right across the street, so I think that would be the most impacted as far as how this might look. And it's going to be actually perfect for the house as far as within, how it's existing laid out. So I wholeheartedly support what they want to do with their porch.
Well, thank you for calling in.
My pleasure.
Is there anyone else on the phone that'd like to speak either for or against the petition? Seeing none, at this point, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask my board for a motion to accept the petition as presented.
I'll make the motion petition as presented.
Thank you, Tom. Do I have a second?
Chris Souza, second.
Thank you. Discussion?
I'm going to vote in favor. I believe it's reasonably necessary for the full enjoyment of a permitted use.
Yeah, I, I think it's a, I think it looks, it will look great and it's not going to impact the setbacks any further than they already are. In fact, I think it's going to, it's going to make, it's going to make the house more livable. So I too am going to support it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Ms. Woods. Have a great evening.
Chairman.
I will prepare the report.
Thank you, Mr. McNally. The next petition that's coming up, I got it, I got an email from Mr. Martland, who's representing the Auchin classes, and that petition is going to be continued till July 27th. His engineer is not available. So we can go down to the following one, Benjamin Contessa.
Okay, petition of Benjamin J. Contessa owner for a special use from section 602 to allow use of existing non-conforming dwelling structure. two to allow use of existing nonconforming dwelling structure to continue as a two-family dwelling. And said real estate is located at one eighty three Walcott Avenue, and further identified as lot, lot three eighty two and three eight, let's say again, two eighty two and two eighty three on Tax Assessor's Platt, one fifteen southeast. And then also there's a variance. So petition of Benjamin J. Contessa owner for a variance from section six oh three and seven oh one to allow the subdivision of lot eight, two eighty two and three and two. Try that again, lot two eighty two and two eighty three, resulting in an undeveloped lot, two eighty two with a frontage of sixty one feet, twenty four inches, where a hundred feet is required, and lot two eighty three maintaining the existing two-family dwelling with a single right side yard setback of two feet, one, three inches, where twenty feet is required, front yard setback of seven feet, four inches, where twenty five feet is required. Lots of, lots are of ten thousand nine hundred and sixty square feet, where fifteen thousand square feet is required, and the frontage of eighty feet, fifty four inches, where a hundred and twenty feet is required. Said real estate is located at one eighty three Walcott Avenue, and further identified as lot two eighty two and two eighty three on Tax Assessor's Platt, one fifteen southeast.
Mr. Contessa, are you on the phone?
We do have two people that are calling in from their phone. So if they need to raise their hand, they need to press star nine in order to do that.
Mr. Costa, can you illuminate me as why, why they're splitting these lots right now? I'm, I'm kind of confused.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
I'm, I'm confused by the petition. So can you, can you help me out with?
Benjamin went in for this to planning a couple of years back, I believe, and, and what, you know, then with, with all the COVID and everything else, did not move forward with the petition. So he had a large chunk of land. I'm reading that he wants to subdivide. There's an existing two-family there. And in order to get as much frontage and stuff as he can, he should be describing this, you know, he's trying to get relief to create a second buildable lot.
But right now, right now.
I'm not seeing, you know, where the frontage, he's saying we're a hundred foot. So this is going to be deemed, if anything, my take would be conditions of a single family, because two, a two-family needs a hundred and twenty.
Yeah, and a two-family needs fifteen thousand square foot.
And also with the land. That's why he's asking you for relief to do this. That's why he's at the board.
If he's not on the phone, and I'd like to continue this to review it. I, I, I have issues with this petition as written. So I, I, I would like to continue it until seven twenty seven, so I can examine it closer. I, I, I read this over last week, and I, I was confused by what they're trying to do. I, I think you have two, you have, right now, if.
You need a petitioner on that, you know, in order to, you know, I'm not going to speak for that.
No, I, I know, I'm not, I, I don't think it's properly written up right now when I'm looking at it. Mr. McNally, feel free to chime in.
Sure. I, I see the same issues as you do, Jim, that regardless of what the application is, without the applicant on the phone to speak to the plan, you, continuance is the right move. And then, given the way it's written up and the request, request, the, the relief requested, being what it is, I think it makes the need for the applicant to be on the phone all the more relevant. So I think you're on the right track, Mr. Miller.
Okay, so we're going to continue this till seven twenty seven, and I'm going to ask that the petitioner revisit how they've written it up, because I, I, at first blush, it doesn't appear to be written up correctly. I don't think I need a vote for that, do I, Mr. McNally?
No, no, you can just move to continue it.
Okay, so we're going to move to continue that.
Jim, were you going to move that to seven, to the July hearing?
Yeah, seven.
Seven twenty seven?
Yep. And that leads us to the next case, David Shreik. If you could read that in, please.
Petition of David Shreik owner and Sean Slade applicant for a variance from sections six oh three, seven oh one, and eight oh three G to construct a twenty six foot by twenty eight foot, one-story, two-stall garage, excuse me, resulting in a twelve-foot west side setback with thirty feet is required. Said real estate is located at six fourteen and six sixteen Green End Avenue, and further identified as lot thirteen on Tax Assessor's Platt, one twenty.
Mr. Shreik, are you on the phone?
Yes, I am.
Hi, how are you doing this evening?
Good. How are you?
Can you read, are you both going to be speaking tonight? Who's going to be speaking first?
First of all, I'd like to amend the record. I'm the contractor, and the homeowners are Keri and Sean Slade. It's reversed on the, on the plan, on the application.
Okay, so the owners are there with you?
Yes, they are.
Okay, if the owners can raise your right hand, I'm going to swear you in together. Do you swear the testimony this evening will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
State your name and address for the record.
Sean Slade, six one six, well, six one four, six one six, Green End Avenue, Middletown.
And Keri Slade, six one four, six one six, Green End Avenue, Middletown.
Tell us about your petition. What are you trying to accomplish?
Well, we would like to replace an old garden shed with a two-car garage. We're small business owners, and we have, you know, a truck and some equipment, and we just don't have any place to put it. We have a, a two-bedroom, one-bath house right now. So we would just like to, a variance to build this twenty four by twenty eight.
Six by twenty eight.
Twenty six by twenty eight, two-car detached garage.
And what is the back building that I see on the plan?
The back building is six one six. That's where we live.
Okay. And then the front building is a rental?
It is a rental, yeah.
So is this registered as a two-family?
Yes.
Oh, so there's two lots, but I don't see.
It's one lot with a detached two-family.
So I'm, Mr. Mr. Costa, shouldn't this be a special use then? Because isn't that, isn't that nonconforming? You're, you're muted, Chris. Chris, you're muted. Chris Costa, you're muted.
Yeah, it is not conforming to have two actual dwelling units on a lot.
So then this should require a special use permit, correct?
That wasn't brought to my attention. It would, you know, it, well, you'd have to include, well, the eight oh three G is not, is the nonconforming portion of it. But, but you're like, you're saying it doesn't, you know, that's the, eight oh three G is not conforming.
Right. So we need a, we would need a special use permit to, to hear this.
Well.
Right, because it's.
Detached garage, i- it isn't expanding the, the, it's not expanding the nonconforming structures. It's a standalone.
But there's two nonconforming structures already on the property, correct? Because it's.
Yeah, but this is just like putting a shed on there. Would I be sending them to the board to add a new bill, a new, a new garage or a shed? For a special.
Anytime you have, anytime you have an expansion of a legal nonconforming use, such as this, with two dwelling units on a single lot, regardless of the relief requested, there needs to be a special use request to expand. Right. Well, and changing a shed to a garage is arguably an expansion of the use. It's a change. So e- even as, as Mr. Silver mentioned, you know, even, even a trivial change to, to lot cover or minimal lot, uh, change the lot coverage on an existing legal nonconforming requires a special use. So it's, it should be both. It's a variance and a special, and a special use request.
And, and I, I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but we're going to have to table this and file for a special use permit, correct, Mr. McNally?
I think that would be appropriate. I, I understand your sentiment completely, Chairman Miller, and, and not trying to get in the way of things, but we, we must make sure that we follow protocol.
So you under, you miss, do you understand what, what we're saying? I don't think it's going to affect your outcome of your petition, but to be, to be absolutely correct, and according to, you know, our zoning code, we have to file that you're requesting a special use permit. Because the two, the two houses are there, and they're a nonconforming use of the property, anything we do to the property, as was, was mentioned earlier by Mr. Silva, they were just putting on a small deck onto an existing structure, and they had to file a special use permit. So I, I think there's, there's time to file it for the July meeting. And I, I just, in an abundance of caution, I want to make sure that we do this by the book.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, this is David Shreik. I'll get together with Chris and file that this week.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Shreik. So I'm just going to continue this pending the filing to seven twenty seven.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Ben Contessa has joined. I am not sure if you want to go back a petition at this time.
Uh, yeah, we can, we can go back, but it's, you know, we're going to end up in the same place. Let me finish this one.
Certainly.
Okay, so we're, we're good here. I'm going to continue to the seven twenty seven meeting, and you're going to do the special use permit.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Contact my office tomorrow.
Okay, Chris.
Mr. Contessa, are you on the line?
He's coming in right now.
Hello, okay. Hi, Mr. Contessa. Hi. How are you this evening? Uh, frazzled because I couldn't get on Zoom until now, so. I, I'm trying, you know, I looked at your petition, your two petitions, and I'm, I'm kind of confused as to what you're trying to accomplish. And I'm confused that, that the paperwork hasn't been filed correctly. So can you, let me swear you in. We'll open the hearing. I've already continued this to the twenty seventh, based on having to review the, the documentation. So, Mr. McNally, should I not open the hearing?
Uh, it, you know, you, you have continued it, and you, you could, you could reopen it. The risk that we have, of course, is that people who were here in the public, upon hearing that it was continued, are no longer present. So again, to follow protocol in public hearings, you know, and, and only really because we're doing it via Zoom, I think the, the proper path would be to continue, to, to preserve the continuance, to avoid saying continue continuing, preserve the continuance, and, and get some clarification from the applicant regarding the, the subdivision portion of this thing.
Mr. Contessa, I'm going to get with Chris Costa tomorrow or Thursday, and we're going to go over the application, because I, I, I want to make sure that you filed it correctly, and what you're trying to accomplish gets done. So we've tabled this to the July twenty seventh meeting, and, and we'll get back to you this week with our concerns, so you'll, you'll understand where we are. Do, uh, would you like a synopsis of this was addressed in two thousand and twelve? No, I've already closed the public hearing, so we can, we can take that up when we do our meeting in July. And I, I will, I will sit with Mr. McNally, and I'll review the file from two thousand and twelve, and then we'll have a better idea. Okay, so I'll be on for July then. Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you for calling in. I, I apologize for Zoom. Hopefully, we'll be moving away from Zoom soon. Yeah, hopefully, yes. Thank you. All right. Okay. Bye bye now. Mr. Heaney, do we have any more cases?
We do not. That was the last case. The, the Slade case was the last case.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Motion made in second, Mr. Curtin and Mr. Suza. Enjoy your evening, gentlemen.
It's ten past.
Okay, thank you.
Seven twelve.
Yeah. And again, I apologize for spacing this out. I don't mean to waste you guys' time. I appreciate.
Family first, Tom, family first.
You're very honest about why you were late.
Okay, you guys have a great.
Military guy.